Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of June 12th, 2019. As we start all meetings, I would like to remind you this meeting is being broadcast live and is also being recorded for use at a later date if need be. I would ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you also please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming this evening. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of May 15th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining.
Motion to approve May 20th, 2019?
I approve, sorry.
An entertaining motion for May 20th, 2019?
Moved, second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Under the superintendent's report, Jeff, go ahead. And I was going to introduce.
Sure. So tonight, we have somebody from the state auditor's office, Mr. Tafoya. Please, if you come to the podium to talk to us a little bit about our unfunded and underfunded mandates from the state.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Fred, thank you for calling up and facilitating this.
My pleasure. I had the pleasure of meeting Dr. Tafoya down the Cape last November and enjoyed that spirited discussion as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, my name is Ben Tafoya. I'm the director of the Division of Local Mandates for Auditor Bump, who sends her regards. But on the night of game seven, I think she was thrilled that I'm the one on the road. But what I wanted to do is to say a few words about what our office does, because it's different than the rest of the office, the state auditor, and then talk a bit about unfunded mandates. So, the Division of Local Mandates was actually created by the voters when they passed Prop Two and a Half in 1980. So, as you know very well, Prop Two and a Half capped the amount that our municipalities could increase property taxes each year. And in exchange for that, a little provision, the law also said that the state could not impose unfunded mandates on our cities and towns, and it created our division, Division of Local Mandates, to help guide the office of the state auditor in making a determination as to what was or wasn't an unfunded mandate. We have gotten involved in unfunded mandate petitions that number in the several hundred since the mid-1980s, when the office began. As you can imagine, in the last few years, the numbers have significantly decreased. But we spend most of our time doing in-depth research reports on the impact of specific state policies on municipal finance. One that we did that you probably heard something about was released in October of 2017, and it related to our regional school districts in the Commonwealth. We have a deep interest in the challenges you face, and that was one of the reasons why I was very happy to come here tonight. So, the local mandate law states that a state law regulation passed or implemented after January 1st, 1981, that imposes any direct service or cost implication or obligation on a city or town is only effective when accepted by the city and town as an option or the Commonwealth provides funding for the community to comply with the law. And since that time, auditors have found a variety of matters to be unfunded mandated.
Sorry about that.
For example, in 2017, just the week before I joined the office, actually, the auditor found portions of the early voting law that had been passed and implemented for the 2016 election to be an unfunded mandate. And so, we worked at the legislature and got reimbursements for cities and towns for those mandated costs after the 2016 and now the 2018 elections. In 2011 and 2012, in a series of decisions, Auditor Bump found portions of the McKinney-Vento homeless student transportation requirement as an unfunded mandate. And since that time, the legislature has at least partially funded reimbursement for cities and towns for homeless students' transportation. In this fiscal year, the amount of reimbursement totals $9 million. Since the mid-1980s, when the Commonwealth regularized polling hours, so that every polling location, the Commonwealth is now open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., the law wasn't always that way, that was found to be an unfunded mandate for three hours for each election. And since that time, our office has been certifying expenses that have gotten paid to cities and towns to operate those three hours. If there are any town clerks listening, we're actually in the midst of doing that work right now. There's a survey that was sent out to all 351 cities and towns, because that money is paid in advance. And so, a year ahead of the election, we certify the election costs so that the Secretary of Commonwealth can prepare to make those payments. So, all of these examples that I've just given you are for mandates that were determined to have been imposed after January 1981. These were things that weren't optional. Cities and towns were required to do them, and they represented a significant expense. But there are exceptions to the law, many over time, that have been clarified, particularly by the Supreme Judicial Court of the Commonwealth. When the mandate imposes what's known as an incidental administrative expense, it does not rise to the level of an unfunded mandate. When there is a stipulation that requires municipalities to comply with the mandate as a condition of state aid, meaning that the state's already given municipalities money, it asks them for behavior X, Y, or Z, that does not constitute an unfunded mandate. When the mandate imposes indirect rather than direct costs on a municipality, for instance, if the legislature passes a law that applies uniformly to all employers in the state, it may also apply to municipalities, and that's not found to be an unfunded mandate because it's a universal action. Or when the new mandate arises as a result of a court decision, we do not have the right to declare something the courts did as an unfunded mandate. When the new mandate or amendment allows a community to choose whether or not to comply with its requirements, so if you're opting in, it's not an unfunded mandate. And when the legislature overrides the local mandate law, which the legislature has chosen to do in the past, there's two major portions of the law. One is Mass. General Law, Chapter 70, which you all are familiar with, is exempt from the local mandate law, as was the Acts of 1993, which is the Ed Reform Act. The legislature also exempted that from the local mandate law. Another exemption from the local mandate law comes if the requirement is directly from the federal government. So, there were a series of petitions over the years related to items that the EPA was asking cities and towns to do, such as safe drinking water standards or what have you. Those don't arise to the level of an unfunded mandate because the federal government is making the state do something. And finally, another major one, which was that prior to passage of Prop Two and a Half, the voters had passed Article 115 of the state constitution, which gives to the legislature the right to shape terms and conditions of employment for municipalities. And that action by the legislature is not considered to be an unfunded mandate if the following applies: if the action by the legislature is optional for cities and towns, or if the legislature funds whatever the requirement would be, or, three, if the legislature passes that requirement with a two-thirds supermajority. So, we had a petition in the summer of 2017 from the then-town of Framingham on the educator evaluation program. And, you know, Framingham documented significant expense associated with their implementation of that. But we found that it did not meet the requirements of being an unfunded mandate for two different reasons. One is much of the educator evaluation program stems from the Ed Reform Act, which, as I mentioned earlier, is exempt from the local mandate law. The other portion of it was that, to a certain extent, it relates to the terms and conditions of employment of teachers, which the legislature has the right to opine on, and the law was passed with the necessary supermajority. So, that wasn't an unfunded mandate. Now, after all of that, it's obvious that there are many things that don't rise to the level under the law in Massachusetts for being an unfunded mandate that we all, as reasonable people, would consider to be an unfunded mandate. So, you know, we get it. It's just that when we opine as to whether something is an unfunded mandate or not, we have to make that decision under the law of the Commonwealth that has been shaped as well by a series of decisions from the Supreme Judicial Court. So, you know, for instance, you folks, as a regional school district, are very concerned about the level of funding you receive for regional school transportation. We share that concern. It was a major issue that encouraged us to do the report that we did that came out in the fall of 2017 on regional school districts in the Commonwealth. It's an issue that the auditor speaks to the legislature about each year, is to make sure that there is proper funding of that requirement for regional school transportation. That's not an unfunded mandate, however, regardless of what percentage the legislature funds that at, because that was a requirement imposed on regional school districts prior to 1981. But we all understand that underfunding of that kind of requirement has a substantial impact on the regional school districts in our Commonwealth. We are happy to see that the legislature has taken positive action since the report came out and increased the level of reimbursement, but that would not, you know, meet the requirement in Mass. General Law that this be funded until it's at 100 percent. There are other aspects of operations of school districts where there is a commitment to fund, that there are items that haven't been funded. So, for instance, I previously mentioned the educator evaluation program. If you read the determination that was done by the auditor in 2017, you will see that there is a specific provision in Mass. General Law that says that the Department of Education will reimburse school districts for reasonable expenses associated with the educator evaluation program. Obviously, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education claim that, well, that money is all rolled into the Chapter 70 formula, and, again, we would be a little skeptical about that claim based on the requirement that is the way the legislation is written. But again, these are any number of a list of items that our school community might find a bit frustrating as a result of underfunding or no funding. The good news is, since the founding of our office, we've been able to help municipalities claim over $350 million in funding for various activities that were found to be unfunded mandates. When we receive a petition of this type in, we do extensive legal and policy research to make a recommendation to Auditor Bump as to the feelings of our office as to whether something constitutes an unfunded mandate or not. If it is found to be an unfunded mandate, the petitioner has a couple of recourse's. They may petition the legislature to fund the commitment, or, in its absence, you have the right to go to Superior Court and ask to be relieved of the burden of whatever the unfunded mandate was. As far as I know, no one has actually successfully ever done that. Some of the court decisions, I can't remember, the '80s and '90s, related to those kinds of claims, but that's when the Supreme Judicial Court stepped in and clarified what actually constitutes an unfunded mandate or not. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on these kinds of issues, and I hope that sort of background from us was helpful.
Did I?
Ellie?
Yeah. Did I misunderstand, or did you say that, in particular, our busing expenses are not considered unfunded or underfunded? So, it's fine that the state's not reimbursing us?
They're not considered to be a legal unfunded mandate. Clearly, that budgetary account is underfunded by the state. I think this year, it's, this current fiscal year, it's high 70 percent for reimbursement. That's less than 100, so it's underfunded.
Right. But are you, am I misunderstanding? Are you saying that, basically, the state and the legislature is saying it's okay that it's underfunded, yet we have a restriction on us that we cannot charge for busing because we're a regional school district, and that was part of?
That's law.
Yes.
Right.
And that's the point that we make to the legislature every year, is that the requirements for student transportation that are made of our regional school districts are higher than those of our municipal school districts, which is why this reimbursement account exists to begin with. You may remember back many, many years ago, there were reimbursements that were done for all school districts for school transportation costs. Those were eliminated in the early 2000s. So, the major reimbursement account that exists for student transportation is still the regional school district account. The auditor and I testified on Friday in front of a legislative commission that is looking at school transportation issues. We reminded the commission, again, about the need to fully fund the reimbursement account for school transportation. Just to give you some idea, our school districts across the Commonwealth expend about $785 million a year on student transportation. Of that number, about 10 percent of that roughly is reimbursed. By far, the largest category of reimbursement is for regional school transportation.
Fred?
You mentioned that you and the auditor gave testimony. Did sped transportation come up?
Yes, we mentioned that, because if you look at that $785 million, the largest single category is for special ed transportation. And one of the reasons that the legislature impaneled that commission, I believe, was because of the serious concerns that were being raised by school districts about rising transportation costs, their inability of finding folks to competitively bid on those contracts, and their inability to find mechanisms to hold down the cost increases for transportation, as well as sort of the myriad of categories of transportation challenges that school districts have, such as general transportation that you folks have to do, special ed transportation, homeless student transportation, and now transportation for children in foster care, which was a part of a report that we released in April of this year related to educational services for children in foster care. DSE has documented last school year about $3.2 million in expenses statewide that relate to transportation for students in foster care.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don?
So, regarding the special ed transportation, would you say that that meets the requirement under Mass. General Law as a legal or truly underfunded or unfunded mandate?
The difficulty, again, with that is it's a requirement that predates 1981.
Okay.
So, that would be its exemption from the local mandate law. However, if you look at Mass. General Law, there is a provision there that says that that expense would be reimbursed to school districts. And as I mentioned, it hasn't been for the better part of two decades now.
Ellie?
Where that is supposed to be funded, I would just like to ask if there is anything that you can do to help out this region?
Well, that's why we did the report that was released in 2017, and we've been going out publicly and talking about that report for a year and a half now, with members of the legislature, with our regional school districts, with other stakeholder groups, to try to remind people that these expenses are out there. They're rising faster than school aid or taxes are coming in, and the reimbursement accounts are significantly underfunded. So, we will continue to do that. Last year, I sat next to the auditor when she testified in front of the Joint Ways and Means Committee on the Budget, and in her 10 minutes, she spent about three minutes talking about the budget for the office of the state auditor, and the other seven minutes talking about issues just like this that we're discussing tonight, encouraging the legislature to fund these accounts.
Anyone else? Dan? Where can we go to file for any of these, release, for any of them?
Well...
Because if we don't try, you know...
Yeah. So, what you do to file a petition if you find that something is considered to be an unfunded mandate is you send a letter to Auditor Bump at the State House detailing what your issue is. And we'll follow up with you, because we need to get some documentation on expenses or whatever. I can give you my card, so you have an address that you can send a letter to, address to the auditor. My office isn't in the State House, but it's close by, and we move mail back and forth every day.
What mandates have been implemented after 1981?
Well, as I mentioned, the biggest ones in recent years was the early voting issue and the McKinney-Vento homeless transportation issue. So, that, I think, this year, the budget will be funded at about $10 million, I think. So, you know, those are substantial. As I mentioned earlier, going back to the mid-1980s, uniform polling hours is an unfunded mandate. Our cities and towns get between $2 and $3 million every two years as a result of that. So, the numbers actually do, you know, do add up.
Ellie?
Just curious, would you prefer one letter from the school committee signed by all of us, or a letter from each individual person?
That's actually an excellent question. So, under the law, the school committee itself can send a letter, so you could vote to send a letter, or you can have the superintendent send a letter, or the town managers of the respective communities can send a letter, or the executive body of the community, so the select boards of the communities can send a letter. It's entirely up to you how you would, you know, choose to do it. But if it's from the school committee, it has to be an official act that is documented in the public record.
Fred?
Is there a time restraint as far as what we send? In other words, if we're looking for monies from FY18, FY17?
So, we have, under the law, we have the right to go back up to three years to document expenses. And anything's possible, but typically, these things get resolved going forward. So, if we say action, XYZ is an unfunded mandate, then the legislature will act in the following year. But we have to document as part of our process a significant financial impact. So, we need that data from the past in order to do that documentation.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much for coming out this evening.
Thank you, folks.
It was very informative, and hopefully, it's answered some of the questions for not only the committee, but some of the people maybe watching. So, thank you very much for coming up. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. My pleasure, anytime. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, do you want to go to the State House report?
Sure. Dr. Jones has a brief, brief report on our student visit to the State House last week. Brief. Dr. Jones?
I swear I get a bad rap. We were lucky enough to have two groups of students present at MasQ's Education Evolution at the State House last week. One was for Spin for Change Project, where students with their 3D printers created fidget spinners that were popular, very popular, a while ago, and then they sold them as an entrepreneurship project and donated the proceeds to the best buddies. So, they went and presented that at the State House. And the other group was for the Summer Read SmackDown. We went and presented that at the State House, and then we were lucky enough, from Representatives Cutler and Representative Sullivan, to give us a brief and very special tour. Superintendent Simonak and Assistant Superintendent Pharoah came with us. We got to go up on the balcony from the governor's office, the floor of the Senate, and the floor of the House. The students were ecstatic, and they all received official citations from the House for the efforts that they had put forth. So, it was a really exciting time, a good time for students, and a glimpse that, you know, they do something extra, they go the extra mile, and this happens. So, brief enough?
Fred?
Could we send a letter to both Representative Carlos Sullivan and Senator Brady, if he was part of that, you know, just thanking them on behalf of the school committee?
We don't need a letter, trust me. We know that they... I appreciate the letter, but, I mean, the kids, the excitement on their faces was thank you and enough. They were very much, I think they felt very, very special that day. I think you guys...
Yeah, it's pretty awesome.
We were able to bring them to the floor of the House chamber, they were able to stand on the rocks room and kind of get that feeling. I think we even encouraged them to become, you know, to one day, if they were, to run for office, to not dismiss that thought. And they were great. I'm happy you guys were able to come up. I'm happy we were able to do that. It was a beautiful day, so being out on the governor's balcony was actually perfect.
That was, yeah. So, it was just a special time, and one of them is interested in running, Damari, who won the Summer Read SmackDown.
She's in my district. Okay.
She's... She's got a couple of years.
She was awesome. She definitely, I told her, I actually also said, this is supposed to be brief, but I also encouraged her that if she wanted to come up and do an internship, or even just to follow along, whatever, I told her I was more than welcome and appreciated her enthusiasm. I hope she does take me up on that offer. I actually gave her my personal cellphone in hopes that she reaches out in the summertime or whenever she had breaks during school, so...
She will.
I know so. I do hope so.
May I just send my staff, I had other representatives in the district that day, so both the Representatives, Sullivan and Josh Callen were there, but I wouldn't say, so I sent my staff there, so...
Oh, excellent. Thank you very much.
Your hospitality was outstanding.
Yeah.
Not for not, Senator Brady, but the house is cooler. The house is cool.
Hold it there. Get your original car.
That's right. It's amazing, years ago, the Senate chambers was much smaller than the House, because there's more members, but at one point, the House members used to meet in the Senate chambers, and then the Senate lobby is where the senators met. And back in those days, they had 240 members. I can't imagine where they fit the members in... I can't imagine where they fit the members in the chambers today in our size.
Yeah.
I mean, people like Tommy Kennedy, who predeceeded me, you know, he had a special slot in the wheelchair, and Fred Berry was a senator on the wheelchair, handicapped, and I can't imagine how they fit them in there. And they used to have phone booths outside. Nobody had their own offices in those days. It's hard to imagine anybody had phone booths. Not to digress on another subject, but in New York City, they'd put some phone booths out for free just to show the young next generations what a phone booth was.
But they were rotary, and they didn't know how to do it.
Right, right, right.
Fortunately, a phone booth has... That is the actual quote, "out of the way."
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Yeah, that's great, Dan.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Superintendent's evaluation, we're going to extend that a little bit longer, seeing as everybody hasn't completed it yet. Unless we have a special meeting in July, I will expect it to be completed so everybody can give it in, hand it into Michelle, so we can tabulate it for a full report out on it in September meeting. So please...
August.
August meeting, I'm sorry, in the August meeting. So please finish it up, hand it into Michelle or myself, so we can figure out what it is and we can report out on the evaluation. Any questions? And if you look in your packet, in case you've lost it, there's another set in there. Any questions? Okay. North River?
I'm just looking, I don't have a report, but I'm looking for a motion to reappoint me as the, on the North River Collaborative Board of Directors.
So move.
Second discussion, this is pretty much a housekeeping thing. The superintendent gets appointed to the Board of Directors. Any questions? All those in favor? Enamis?
Thank you.
Great.
We're going to move on to budget, 2020 budget. We're wrapping up 2019 right now, and Christina will report out in August once we finalize 2019. But 2020, there were some questions around where we ended up as far as staffing. So I'd like to just present to the committee, to the public, where we are. When I said we cut 19 positions, don't forget, we cut $292,000 out of supplies, legal, multiple things, Chromebooks before we got to E and D at $562,000, and then $897,000 and change in positional cuts. So we, we lost an accountant in the business office upstairs in Central Office. We lost the facilities building use coordinator out of operations. Our technology director was cut. We are without a technology director. We lost six paraprofessionals in the district. We've lost a high school business teacher. We've lost a high school science teacher. We've lost a grade teacher at Indian Head. We've lost a duty aide at each elementary school. We lost a art, excuse me, a science teacher at Hanson Middle School. We lost a grade school teacher at Duval, and we've lost two grade school teachers at Conley Elementary, and a .2 music teacher who did fifth grade band. We also eliminated foreign language at the middle because of, as I talked about, equity issues, and we recycled those positions into three elementary adjustment counselors to work within our social-emotional need. So those were cuts, but recycled cuts, and as I presented to the committee, we don't do middle school language equitable, and before the state came at us and said, there's an issue of equity there, we recycled that with the hopes of looking at a better budget in the future, putting together a solid foreign language program, either six through 12, and in our vision, K to 12. In that restructure, recycle, we also reduced the added district coordinator from full-time to .6 so that we could fulfill those three elementary adjustment counselors. So all in all, 22.2 positions were cut or refocused, so to speak, but if you want to say bottom line, there are 19 positions that we will not have within the district next year from every aspect, from the duty aide to the director of technology. All of those positions in Central Office, in operations and in technology are being redistributed with really no additional compensation within the budget. We've just absorbed those positions right now. The teaching positions, there are classrooms that are a little bit above what we had last year. On average, we're still pretty good, but you will see a bubble in a couple of grades. Fourth grade at Indian Head, fifth grade at Conley, I think it was fifth grade at Duval, are a little bit above what we would like them to be due to the cuts that we have. One of our goals was to put those elementary adjustment counselors in to problem solve and help the classroom teacher, and in turn, if there are higher classroom sizes, the adjustment counselors will be able to work with some of the kids that are struggling within those classrooms. But those adjustment counselors are going in for next year. There's still some hope out there. I responded to a couple of letters from parents this week. I'm cautiously optimistic that once we close fiscal '19 and the Governor's budget comes into fiscal '20, we might be able to resolve some classroom teacher issues. I'm not looking to resolve anything else within the district other than classroom teachers at this point, no matter what comes in from the Governor's budget. But those are our cuts right now within the district as far as personnel. Questions?
Questions? Fred?
Are there DESI guidelines as to classroom size?
Guidelines and parameters, sure. 25, depending. They'd like them smaller, but we have, we've had middle school classes up over 30 in related arts and even foreign language. So we'd like to have the ideal at 25, 25 students. The higher the grade, the more kids I think we can have in a classroom to get them prepared for middle school. I wouldn't like to see a kindergarten class of 25, and our kindergarten classes are between 19 and 21. So as we matriculate forward, there are high school classes of 30. We try to stay away from those, but eyeballing it, we try to stick around 25.
Anyone else from the committee before I ask? Valerie? Go ahead.
Can you go into detail in the PERS? These are not one-on-one PERS or special needs, so...
So every student with an IEP that needs a PERS assistant are taken care of. These are other PERS that we use as far as classroom instruction and support. As we progress every year, we lose and then rehire PERS over the course of the year. So we've already had resignations and retirements from our PERS. We're just not refilling those positions. But any student with a special ed, with an education plan, is going to be supported by a PERS, if it's a one-on-one, if it's timeout, if it's wherever, if it's resource room, or if it's pull-out, they'll be supported with PERS help.
So these PERS might be offering just relief to classroom teachers bouncing here and there for support, so now the teachers will be missing that.
One of the issues, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely correct. One of the issues we found coming into this position, when we cut our budget way back when 13, 14, it seemed like we were always cutting, we replaced some teachers with PERS help. I think we've grown accustomed to PERS help as well. That's not the necessary, that's not an essential to other schools. We have pretty significant PERS support right now. I don't want to take that away in one fell swoop, but as our, and we are seeing decreased enrollments, we will probably see PERS reductions over time. But we increased our PERS help to help teachers out because of classroom sizes in 13, 14, and now we're at a better classroom size. We can also decrease some of our PERS support.
And maybe the adjustment counselors will be helping in that respect, too?
Absolutely correct. One of the critical needs, and we brought this to the committee as principals years ago, every year, it was the social-emotional piece. The elementary adjustment counselors will offer triage for those students who have a little meltdown in class. The assistant principal is now working with that student, or the goal of the adjustment counselor would be to get them back into class instead of sitting in the office for a while, going home, or sitting with the school psychologist, because the school psychologist's job is really to do testing in small group. And we haven't had that component in our district for quite a while. Our principals are really looking forward to that support, and our classroom teachers are as well.
Anyone else? Fred?
Are we setting a meeting date to do the budget, and budget only, figure while we're discussing budget and what the expectations of what we would want to see for information as a committee? I do have some ideas.
Well, we're going to set a budget meeting for the whole school committee.
Correct.
Probably sometime in July. We'll get to that as we move forward. We can do it right now, I mean...
That's, I just thought while we're discussing budget, and also, one of the things we discussed at the last meeting was what would we want for information at that point from the administration?
Go ahead.
I would think that if we had year-over-year contractual increases with a two-year look-back, showing actuals in requested amounts, that might be a good way to, you know, start very similar to what we do with our budget book or the old-style budget book. Estimate increases, health insurance, utilities, et cetera, and what do we have locked in? You know, so the basics of what you know for our budget to be, and then some of the That's sort of my mindset of what we would need. I don't know if anyone else has any other ideas?
Does anybody have any date that they'd like to see it in July? Seventeenth available?
I cannot do the 17th.
10th? 10th, we will be at the superintendent's conference. 10th and the...
10th is up.
And the 24th, we will be presenting at the principal's conference.
Somebody say the 17th didn't work?
Yeah, it doesn't work for me.
What about the 8th or the 9th, a Monday or Tuesday even?
That would work.
Tuesday will be down, down.
You'll still be, okay.
That's when the conference starts early this year.
What about 16?
The 3rd.
What about Wednesday, July 3rd, or is that too soon?
The day before the 4th.
31st of July?
Oh, whatever.
We're meeting...
How about June, July 2nd or 1st?
But if you're asking for this information right now, you're looking at it in two weeks. So that's putting us under the gun right now. I have multiple people going on vacation to use their days, so...
The 31st.
Earlier July is...
Are you saying later is better?
Later is better if we're going to have a meeting.
I'm leaving the 22nd.
July 30th, 31st. When's the next school committee meeting?
August 28th.
28th.
The 8th of August?
August 28th.
28th.
I don't think we can afford to wait. What about the week of the 22nd of July?
I'm gone.
We could do the 31st.
I won't be here that whole last week of July in August.
Looking for the week of the 22nd to the 26th.
What was the 24th? What was the problem with that?
I'm out, but 20, if we do it on a Monday, the 22nd.
The 22nd, Mike? Dan?
Yep.
Okay. July 22nd?
And what is the stated objective of this meeting specifically? What are we trying to accomplish?
We're going to take a look at the whole budget going a little bit backwards and try to comparison and see what our increases might be, and get a better, maybe a little bit better forecast for the towns before they get into their town meetings, their special town meetings, when they start, so you can give them some sort of forecast. Hopefully, it'll get the process, every year, we said we want to start it sooner, and we discuss leading the way of having to do it because it seems to always get pushed off, and then it doesn't start until February, and we end up under the gun with the meetings. So that's part of what we're trying to do.
And I'm sorry, perhaps, and I didn't articulate my vision clearly, and solely my vision right now, is to also start with where would we like to see if we're going to be asking for an override to restore services and also enhance the services that, and I'll just say it this way, that we should be providing in this day and age, and start putting that on the table and formulating a picture so that by the time the summer's over with the towns, we have a clear and precise way of saying, here's what we're looking at, and that should give them enough time for their fall town meetings, et cetera, you know, to be able to put things forward, and if we're going to have a ballot question, we can go forward from there. So I really think we have to address our shortcomings, and the only way we're going to do it is to ask the public.
Like we've discussed, we have to forecast forward if we can to give the towns some sort of a leeway time, and then let it come from the towns back to us, and this is where we're at. So that's kind of the objective. It's two parts, Chris, I'd say.
So statement and question. So statement would be, is there a way for us to kind of, as best we can, I know this is crystal ball-type stuff, but forecast maybe beyond just a year. So here's kind of our three-year look forward in terms of a rough estimation, to Fred's point, building on it. The towns need to understand, this isn't a one-and-done. This is what's, we know what's coming down the pike over the next few years, right? So we've got to get in front of that, or it's just going to get worse.
So we can look at right now, our contracts are set for two more years, so we can give you a rough estimate there. Our costs for transportation and custodial services are set, so we can give you that rough estimate. And I think what we're doing with SPED, we're going to be able to project better than we have in the past.
Right.
The town of Whitman, I was at a department meeting on Monday, the town of Whitman is looking for an override in October. The town administrator threw out the number of 2.5 million. That was followed up with a question by a department head, where'd you get that number? And it's been bounced around in FinCom, I believe, but there was no, we have not submitted anything yet. We have not talked yet.
Okay.
The town of Hanson has not said boo about an override in the fall. So I don't know. So I think you can throw projections, I can throw out the wants that we need to recover some things, but I'd like to get those folks around the table as well to see where we're going. It was stated at the department meeting that the override in Whitman would be operational, and some departments are looking at that override for their fiscal '20 budget. That would not affect the school district's fiscal '20 budget, and if that override was passed, where would that money go? Would that go to our E and D? Would it be earmarked for the fiscal '21 budget along with the, you know what I mean? So all those questions were coming out and with no definitive answers yet.
And with all due respect to the town of Whitman and the town of Hanson, I don't think that we can conform to them taking a number, pulling it out of the air, and saying, this is what we're going to go for, for an override. I think what we need to do is we need to show what our needs are. We need to structure the override, and I've said it in the past, you know, as a Fund A, B, C, or D. You know, this is, you give us A, and this is going to give us all of these things of where we should be, but if you're not going to do that, at least do B. And if they don't want to do that, they do C, or if they say, hey, we want to give you nothing, then that's D. But we need to have it clear, concise, and separate from whatever the town's doing because you have two towns in a region, and we have to match what Hanson and vice versa. So when Hanson turns around, and they have their ballot question, I'm hopeful that the selectmen would approve a ballot question for us, then now you have equity. You have the same, people voting on the same thing. And from my conversations with the Department of Revenue, you choose whatever passes, so to speak, that is the same. So if one took C and the other took B, then, but they have both passed on B, then B would prevail, so to speak. You know, so if they have both selected B, and then one town maybe went a little further or vice versa.
You know, between Chris and Fred here, we have to do this, like what Fred was saying, because we can't rely on the towns separately. And we also have to go at least five years, I'd say, projecting if we can. I know it gets monkey after the contracts, but best estimates is better than no estimates at all, because we can't just keep doing what we've been doing for the last 10 years here. Every second or third year, shoot for an override, and it's shot down. We have to fix the problem. Towns aren't doing it. It's like, we're going to have to get together, enforce the hands to get together, work with the selectmen, work with the FinComs, but we've been trying that for years, so it's now for us, take it over, run with this, get it done finally. We know what we have to be doing, we just never get the support. So, you know, we have to do something. We're not going to get it if we keep putting it in the towns' hands again. It makes it with their budgets because we get, you know, it's like we don't get the say of what we're doing for our school systems. You know, it's time we start running with stuff and get it done, because I've been up here for over six years and nothing get done, just like Mr. Trotter said, he's been doing it for, you know, 12 years, can't get anything to happen. Well, it's time for us to step up and take control and get this thing to happen and get in on both towns' warrants or whatever and stuff, but we have to show the towns everything for a five-year projection plus, because we can't keep coming back. We have to fix the school system, we have to get it done right. You know, FinComs should be involved and everything, but we can't, we keep doing what we do with these guys. It goes back to the FinComs, they're two separate towns, two different things. One might do it, the other, you know, we can't control it that way. We're losing out.
Mike?
So do we decide on the 22nd meeting?
Pardon me?
Did we decide on the 22nd?
Yes.
Are we inviting finance and selectmen?
We will.
We are?
We should be.
Okay.
And selectmen.
Selectmen.
Chris, did you have a question?
No, the more the merrier.
Peggy, you were first.
Peggy Westfield, State Street in Hanson, this is for Jeff. Jeff, I was wondering what the class sizes will be for first, second, and third grade with these cuts? I know you said nineteen to twenty for kindergarten, but the, is lower elementary really gonna balloon?
No, so, looking at Indian Head, I have in kindergarten, twenty-one in full day, nineteen point four in grade one, twenty point two in grade two, twenty in grade three, and twenty-five or twenty-six in grade four.
And same with Deval and Conley, about the same?
Deval, like, oh, let's see, I'm looking right here.
Second call down.
Why don't you read it?
Conley School, you're looking at, uh, let's see, eighteen to nineteen students in grade one, twenty-two in grade two, between twenty and twenty-one in grade three, between twenty-four, twenty-five in grade four, and between twenty-six and twenty-seven in grade five.
That's the big grade five. I taught grade five.
And that's what we're looking at. If I can recover a person, we're gonna look at, at there. And I'm cautiously optimistic, and that's the word I'm using this summer, because things happen over the course of the summer, with monies floating bound, and even if we, we've used the strategy, if we can hire low, and take the salaries from a retire rate, we'll try to do that as well, to make that less impact on the class size.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
Rosemary?
Rosemary Conley, four oh five Franklin. I just wanted to go over state recommendations for, for a finance committee to determine a levy, to help determine, to give our recommendations, these are the state recommendations, but to get an idea of what you might need earlier is better for, for that, for our perspective. So, I think we saw the change in the levy limit a little late this year, but those things can happen, it happened more easily if we have a better idea of, just an idea of projections. So, starting that process early would be great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay. On budget, still in your packet, you'll see a couple of things. One is, I received a bill, or a letter from the Department of Public Works in Whitman. I'm not gonna read that to you verbatim, but it has a tremendous impact in the district. Met with Dennis Smith yesterday, with Christine and Ernie, and the long and short of this is that they've misread the high school meter, the water and sewer meter, since we opened, to the tune of $307,000. They apologize for their error. They apologize for their error. I have not consulted legal yet, I wanted to, to bring it to the attention of the school committee. Dennis apologized, didn't want us to shoot the messenger, as he's the new superintendent, but the person who's been meeting, reading the meter incorrectly for fifteen years, since the day we opened, and we have yet to get a correct bill. My problem, outside of the letter that I got yesterday, is that I have no budget projection on what we use for water in this building. Now, we had the same bill, consistent for fifteen years. I don't know if we're gonna be short at the end of the year. I will let the committee know in August, preliminaries, what we get over the course of the summer. It's, it's a challenge, I don't know if we're legally bound to that, but I wanted to share it with committee. Before I contacted our attorney, I've had Christine contact our insurance company as well, just because, to put them on notice, but they, in their estimate, in their documentation they gave me, they talk about error, and they apologize for their error. But they do say, um, the town of Whitman, Department of Public Works and Sewer Division apologize for this error and any inconvenience it may cause, a little bit. However, the water and sewer services for Whitman and Hanson Regional School District and its fieldhouse, as well as all water and sewer accounts in Whitman must be accounted for and paid.
To dovetail on that, just to give you an idea of what that would be, that would be $180,000 to the town of Whitman roughly, and $120,000 to the town of Hanson. We're gonna discount that seven thousand on the three hundred and seven, and just say it's three hundred. It'd be a hundred and eighty and a hundred and twenty, so, for both towns to understand where that would put us with three hundred. Go ahead, Ellie.
My understanding with this is that it's all over Whitman, not just the high school. That, and it's not somebody misreading them, it's the water meters themselves are too old, and they don't work right, and they're being, the town is being charged X amount more than what they're pulling in by, locked in for the water, so.
I, I didn't wanna, I, I was kinda shocked, you know, getting this yesterday with Dennis, just looking at it, and looking at the number, and I just kinda shook my head. It's fifteen years, if it was a year or two that there was mistakes, I can understand, but since the building opened, it's been incorrect, and to, to get this yesterday, again, not blaming Dennis at all, nice, nice man, but I was a little shocked and stunned, and I'm glad we had this meeting tonight, so I could share that with you before it starts to spin out. And I did hear there were different issues within the community itself.
Yeah. So, it makes me wonder if they're gonna send back bills to everybody in Whitman.
Fred?
The bill itself, does it charge for water and sewer?
Yes. So, I mean, I didn't give you...
The sewer portion, we should have relief on, because of our gray water system here. When, when we built the building and, with John Pettenelli, and when this was all set up, you know, with using the tanks and the gray water, that would alleviate the...
All, all I said to Dennis is, we were gonna investigate, and it would take some, take some time, and I'm sure if I talked to the town of Hanson, presented this to the selectmen, they in turn would do a formal investigation on the error. So, yeah, I, I gotta, I just want, I didn't dive into this.
Yeah. Now, they charging us cost for the water, or are they charging us retail rate?
They're, they're, again, I didn't, all they, I've got all the, all the underestimated bills in front of me.
Jeff, what was the amount, I'm sorry?
Total?
Yeah.
Three oh seven.
Three oh seven, I think, close to...
Fifteen years.
Yes. Total error was three oh eight, uh, total, actual was three seventy-nine, nine seventy-seven point seventy-seven, total billed, seventy-one thousand dollars, eight seventeen.
I'm sorry, I'm writing that down, can you say that a little slower?
So, I've got, total actual was three seven nine, nine seventy-seven point seventy-seven. Total billed was seventy-one, eight seventeen, forty-two, point forty-two. Total error, three oh eight, one sixty, thirty-five. Total, total underbilled was that, three oh eight. Total overbilled error was seven hundred and forty dollars and seventy-seven cents, to make it a grand total of three oh seven, four nineteen, fifty-eight.
So, we're underbilled and overbilled?
Yes, the fieldhouse is overbilled.
That's clear.
So, again, I, I don't wanna dive too deep, let me do the research over the summer, I'll keep you abreast by, by email if need be, but I wanted to share this right up front, and say that, that's another piece. Also, just to share with you, not necessarily budget related, but, but time related, and personnel related, as far as man-hours, you have, we have a records request from, from Mr. Linum, looking for quite a bit of information from fiscal twenty-nine, uh, eight, or, excuse me, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and you can see that item, what, what they're looking for. It's gonna be, it's detail, it's a detailed request, um, it's a, it's a records request. We have ten days to comply, more likely than not, I'm gonna ask for a continuation of that, because most of my staff is, is central office staff, are trying to utilize their vacation days that they have for them in the next couple of weeks, which I don't blame them, because they're here for the school year, and things slow down right now, but as you can see, it's pretty detailed, and get that to Mr. Linum as soon as we can, but I wanted to share with the committee that we had that records request from the town of Whitman.
What is the reason?
Mike?
Why all of a sudden are they?
Not sure, got the email yesterday afternoon.
Anyone else, Chris? I just had a question. All the departments in Whitman were issued the same request.
I've not, I had a conversation with Chief Breno today, he didn't mention this at all, so I'm not sure.
See Mr. Bazanson here, I'm putting him on the spot, do you know? Okay. Rosemary, come up, please, so everybody can hear you.
While she's walking up? I would think that anybody else, they would have these records, because they'd be direct employees of the town.
We're looking at five years, and because we haven't done the five-year back, he may be looking, and I, I mean, I'm, from the discussion last night, looking back a little bit to move forward, to build that plan, so.
I, I mean, I understand that too, but looking at instructional grade level and certification of middle school teachers, and what subjects they teach, gets detailed, outside of the budget.
Oh, yes, it does.
So, I just wanted to share that with you, and that will be a question I'll ask Chief Bettin and Chief Breno, as I see them along, moving forward, but I did wanna, because of the financial piece of that, I brought it into budget, because it's gonna take, Christine, what, twenty-five hours maybe to put this together, this is an easy data to gather?
Do we have to print it, or can it be sent electronic?
That, I don't know, Michelle.
Some of it's both.
Some of it's both, some of it's electronic, some of it's...
Because if you print it, kind of, we can charge so much per page.
Per page, correct. But I look at that, it's small, but I'm just looking at man-hours at the end of the school year, going forward, so I wanted to share that with committee.
Anyone else?
The capital items, you have additions in your packet, what, Christine, do you want to present a little bit about capital, please? Christine and Ernie met with Whitman and FinCom yesterday.
Uh, we met with FinCom at seven-thirty last night, to review our capital requests in Whitman, um, for the June seventeenth meeting next Monday night, and this morning, well, actually, late last night, in your packet, or the handout tonight, there's a cover sheet that shows, uh, what FinCom is actually recommending out of our warrant articles. First one being, we're gonna start with the Whitman schools only, the Whitman Middle School Curtain, uh, warrant article thirty-five.
They're highlighted for you.
Fourteen thousand dollars. Do you, do you have that?
Mm-hmm.
The doors, all three, all three of the schools over there, twenty-five thousand dollars, and the thumb latches, for forty-five thousand dollars. We have applied for a safety grant, um, for sixty thousand dollars, so that would have offset some of these costs, if we, when, and if we find out about that grant. We thought we would have heard by now, did you hear anything else today, Fred?
No, I didn't bother calling Curtis, I feel I bothered him badly, you know, yesterday.
Yeah, there's so many districts waiting with bated breath for that grant. Then the next grouping is the actual, the capital warrant articles here at the high school, that are voted, that FinCom voted to recommend. The first one is the gym floor here at the high school. Total cost is thirty thousand, so Whitman share is seventeen thousand, nine forty-six. The handicap ramp out here, um, the total cost, estimated cost, seventy thousand, so Whitman share is forty-one thousand, eight seventy-four. The thumb latches here at the high school, total thirty-five thousand, Whitman share twenty thousand, nine thirty-seven. Warrant article forty-one, the fire lane out here to the far right, uh, total estimated cost, twenty-five thousand, Whitman share, fourteen thousand, nine fifty-five. The track that we've been talking about for the last two years, one hundred, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is the estimated total cost, Whitman share, expected, expected share cost is one thirty-four, not five ninety-five. So, the total between Whitman and the high school is three hundred and fourteen thousand, three oh seven, that the FinCom is recommending for town meeting Monday night. The four articles that they passed over, or did not recommend, were the rooftop units here at the high school, solar lighting here at the high school, two replacement vehicles here at the high school, and roadway repairs here at the high school.
And those items were also passed over in Hanson as well?
Uh, the roadway...
Except for the roadway.
The roadway Hanson actually passed at their Maytown meeting.
They passed, but if the other three were passed over...
The other three were passed over, correct.
Perhaps things can get addressed come fall.
Yeah, that's, that's what we talked about, that we, they were hoping to address this at their fall town meeting.
Questions, anyone, Christine? Okay.
Then you also have, um, this special town meeting at Whitman is also Monday night. Lisa Green has applied for a Green Communities grant, that would do LED lighting at Conley and Duval schools. The total project is a hundred and eleven thousand, a hundred and ninety-two dollars. We received fifteen thousand, thirteen dollars in incentive payments from National Grid, but they've asked us to set aside appropriate forty thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars going forward. I'm not really sure when we're gonna hear about the grant, did Lisa say? Yeah, sometime in the fall, we'll hear whether we got the grant.
But FinCom recommended that article?
Yes, FinCom recommended that article, and I asked that you vote the language here, I just got this language, so.
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
You have the language there, Bob, to read?
I'm sorry?
You have the language there to read into the record?
Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate forty thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars, pay for the costs associated with installing LED lighting in Conley and Duval schools. I'll take any action there too, but you don't read that, both by the Whitman and Hanson Regional School Committee. This project costs a hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. The town will receive fifteen thousand, thirteen dollars in incentive payments from National Grid, and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred from Green Communities grant funds, recommended by the Finance Committee. An entity, a motion, a second, or is that what you were doing?
Some move.
Discussion. All those in favor? Okay. Any questions for Christine? All right.
I have nothing further on budget or capital.
Preliminary, uh...
Busting, so I'll be brief. So, we asked, committee asked me to look at, with regional transportation climbing to hopefully eighty-two percent in the future, thank you to the legislature for pushing that forward, what could we do to, do better with our school start times? So, I asked Christine and Karen Villanueva, Director of Transportation, to come up with a scenario where the high school starts close to eight, the middle schools stay the same at seven-thirty, and all three elementaries are on the set, start time. They came up with three scenarios, and there would be an additional cost of four hundred thousand dollars estimated for buses. The cost to our district would be about sixty-nine percent of that, meaning the towns would pick up the unmandated transportation of under a mile and a half. Bottom line, if we had eighty percent regional transportation reimbursement, we could do that plan for fifty-four thousand dollars in the FY twenty budget. So, I'm gonna continue to look at that, I think that's reasonable, to put all our schools at a reasonable start time, and our elementaries at a consistent time for professional development, and interchange, if we, if we need to, with floating of teachers. So, I thank Christine and Karen for putting that together. There is a cost of four hundred thousand dollars. The towns, if they continue to do unreimbursed, or, or unmandated transportation, they're gonna have that cost, so we'll present that in our budget, so they can prepare for those costs, if we decide to move to a different start time for FY twenty, or schools start, or school year twenty-twenty-one.
Fred?
I just think it's something that we should pencil in almost in ink, you know, to be preparing for for next year.
There's, there's no question.
And hopefully, we'll see, coming out of conference, committing eighty-two percent instead of eighty percent.
Yeah, that will help too.
That'll help a little bit.
But I think we've talked about the budget piece of it, we've talked about the research based for, for academics in the high school, seven oh five is really early. So, if we can do this, this would be a very good thing for our district moving forward. That's all I have for now.
Any other questions about start times? Okay, Jeff, do you have anything else?
No, eh, no, I don't, I'm good.
McQuon School status, I have actually taken a walk through McQuon School recently, and it's pretty much cleaned out. Ernie, you wanna give a quick little scenario? I mean, I walked through the building, it looked, it looks pretty clean, I know that we're negotiating with the town of Hanson for a little extended time, and everybody's kind of on the same page with that, not really caring exactly when we do get out, unless you've heard different.
No, I think we're on the path to handing it over to the town at the end of June. I think we made some pretty good, pretty good moves on getting everything out of there, all the surplus equipment that we didn't bring to Cassole's, um, we put in a dumpster and hauled away. It's looking pretty good, Bob.
Any questions about McQuon? Any questions about McQuon? Just to give quick, quick, brief, it's all boarded up, it's all winterized, doesn't matter whether they have the keys or they don't, it's ready to go and stay on the shelf in a safe, tight manner for now. Questions? Okay. Subcommittee reports, Insurance Subcommittee.
We need to set a date.
Christine, are you prepared to do that sometime this month?
I probably think it was so far this month. If not, the middle to the end of July.
Take a look at the calendar. What's a week from today look like?
Not good for me.
No.
It depends on what time, I can't meet on the 19th.
It's Insurance Subcommittee, anyway, it's not the whole committee. Insurance Subcommittee consists of Chris Howard, Fred Small, and Ally.
And I think it's actually, Bob, I think it's Chris Scriven. I think, I think Chris should be on the insurance and not on policy, and I should be on policy and not on insurance. So I think we just.
Okay. Michelle, can you correct that?
Yeah.
So it's you guys, the three of you.
Yeah. Can you correct that, Michelle? Thank you. So Ally, did you say you're no good for the, that's a week from today?
Yeah, no good for the 19th, unfortunately.
Pardon me?
No good for the 19th, for me.
You go on the 26th.
No, I'm back to 26th.
When do you leave?
19th.
What about the 18th?
How about July 2nd or 3rd? Anytime after the 26th.
2nd would work for me.
Works for me.
Oh, yeah, I'm forgetting, that's 4th of July type, that's, yeah. It's another week, it's still got to work.
Right.
How about July 8th?
Never worked.
I'm not here.
You're not here?
Let's tentatively shoot for that, if everybody can't make it, we've got to get a start somewhere.
Christine's not.
What'd you say, Christine?
I'm not available that July 8th.
How about the, let's go back to, okay, let's go back to the 2nd, so everybody can...
July 2nd.
July 2nd.
What time?
Can we do it in the early afternoon, 2 or 3 o'clock?
3 would be about as early as I can.
Early as you can do it?
I work till 5:00.
6?
Yeah, the, on the, can you be here at 5:30, Ally?
I'm coming from Plymouth, if I do like 100 on the highway, maybe.
No, we don't want to do that.
6?
I can do 6.
Want to do 6 on July 2nd?
Yep. All right, warrant Subcommittee, we have to vote this warrant, Michelle?
So moved.
Meeting minutes are May 22, 2019. That's what you're moving, Fred?
Yes.
Do you second it?
He did.
Discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Policy Subcommittee, I know there's been no policy change, and they haven't met. Facilities Subcommittee?
Could I make a request, and we can discuss this at the next meeting, but I believe policy does need to meet, just so we can talk about some different things going on, and perhaps...
We'll do it at the next meeting. Facilities and capital improvement, why don't we meet before the next meeting, 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
The meeting of the 28th.
Legislative update?
Yeah.
They're here. I'm sorry.
Which next meeting? I suppose Facilities meeting.
6 o'clock.
No, what day?
The budget meeting, or the?
August.
Or the regular school?
August.
The regular School Committee.
Of the 28th.
Yes. On the regular School Committee meeting, one hour previous.
Awesome.
Like we usually do.
Can we just set up during the summertime, a quick walkthrough like we've done in the past for the Facility Committee, just send it out, and whoever can make it can make it?
Legislative update, we have our legislators here. Anyone that would like to come up, I'd be more than happy to entertain having you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, and I want to thank everyone who's here tonight. I'll be brief, I know the Bruins are playing in the seventh game tonight.
Yeah?
Fred, first of all, thank you for sending that correspondence to the Ways and Means members of the House and the Senate, that's important. We all send correspondence to the Ways and Means Committee as well on important initiatives that we're trying to support. We didn't get everything we would have liked, as you know. That being said, the revenue is a big key. We have to balance our own checkbooks, just like everyone here has to balance their checkbooks at home and so forth. So revenue was down in December, and I don't know if I'm repeating myself from...
Oh, but we're a billion dollars ahead of estimates.
Yeah, because of federal tax laws, people didn't pay their capital gains at the end of the regular year like they used in the old days. They waited until April 15th, until we got an extra day in Massachusetts. So revenue has been up, which is great news, but we still have to be careful, because if there's a downturn coming, we put money in a rainy day account to save, we use it back in the way when we had the last downturn, but revenue is up. So we, so the budget started with the governor, revenue increased after that, went to the House, revenue increased, and then by the time it got to the Senate, revenue increased even more, which is great. So we were able to get some things in the budget that the House couldn't get in until it got to the Senate. The House did similar things, a little different, so it's in a conference committee, and I can't speak for the House members, but we're all in support of all the things that you've written into support. So some things were in the House budget, weren't in the Senate budget, vice versa, some things in the Senate budget, weren't in the House budget.
Whitman-Hanson, I think we have three things.
Pardon me?
There are three things that are important to us.
Yeah, the regional school transportation.
Transportation from 80 to 82%.
Yes.
Circuit breaker, getting up to 75%, which I think, from what I've heard, is pretty much a no-brainer, it's happening.
Yeah, but again, you, it's important, you sent the correspondence, like we sent correspondence to the members of this committee, because we did get it in the Senate budget, because revenue was up, so that's good to fully fund it to 75%.
And then the difference in the two budgets is a tweak between the two for charter school reimbursement.
Right.
It's about 37, 9 and change, just under 38 grand to us.
Question on that?
I'm sorry?
May I ask a question?
Sure. No, go right ahead.
So the, there's a discussion about changing the way the formula is for reimbursement. My question is, I know, the House version would benefit you guys this year, I'm curious if someone has done the analysis to see long-term, if that would also benefit you, because it's a 60, 40, 20, I believe?
It goes down, down, down. It ends up being about the same as what we've been seeing. This year, it gives us a bump, and then we go back to...
Have a nasty surprise, you know, near 2020.
No, the Promise Act, Fund Our Future, whatever, Cherish, whatever you want to call it, it really ends up meaning nothing to us, you know, as a district.
I talked about the charter reimbursement.
Right, but the charter portion of it, same thing, it's if come, maybe.
Okay.
And then Chapter 70 money, we were able to raise at higher levels, of course, it's never enough, but we raised at highest levels than it's ever been. Now, that all being said, with what's in the budget, we still are working on some things we did not get accomplished. There is some legislation filed moving forward based on the Budget Review Commission and all that, that we're going to be taking up, I think, within the next month or so. I can't say when, it's up to the chairman on the education committees to get this out, and the chairman of Ways and Means, but they are guaranteeing us that we are taking and addressing that as well moving forward, and hopefully, we'll get everything done by July 1st. There was only one year we didn't, in my tenure as a Senator and a Rep., and I can't speak for, since, I know Rep. Sullivan's fairly new, and Rep. Josh Cutler, who's been on board for a few years, there's only been one year we didn't get the budget, in our tenure, it didn't get done by July 1st, so we had to do a one-month budget to keep everything rolling. It might have been even last year, the year before, if I'm not mistaken. And then, we were able to get everything done, but that was the only time this has ever happened, and now revenue is in a good spot. But again, we still have to provide some in that rainy day funding case the economy goes south, which like real estate values have been through the roof, eventually, you know, it's going to go down. Its history shows it, goes in 10- to 15-year cycles, and we have to make sure we're prepared for the future with that as well, so. That's kind of it on my end, I did send some correspondence to you, Fred, and if...
I never saw, I never...
I'll give you a copy tonight, because we sent an email, because I know you were asking for about the 100...
The 100, the per pupil, I never got an answer.
And there's, well, I'll give it to you tonight, there's basically two things, there's a debate on this, too, not everybody agrees, but I was told by the experts that if you fund certain districts that are wealthier than Whitman and Hanson and Brockton and all the other communities, they benefit more if the funding is equal across the board than these other towns. So they recommended not doing 100 per student, they recommended coming up with a different formula, and that's what we're moving forward with. The other thing is, we have to balance the budget, and based on what we have for revenue, they recommended taking it up in this Budget Review Commission's report, which we're doing later on.
Right.
Not doing on the budget.
In that report, if I'm not mistaken, shows $20 the first year, and then incrementing up to $50 at the end of five years.
Right.
The way that stair steps up.
Right, and this year, we get it at 30 for now.
We get it at 30, so that's, I mean...
I know, we want more, of course, and we all support it, but it didn't pass in either branch, so. And I'll give you that information again, I'll leave for the whole board if you want. And did you want to add anything to that?
Usually, I try to get in first, but I think the Senator kind of covered it all. Just on a more, maybe, lower-key note, wanted to thank Jeff and all your team for coming up to the State House just last week. We had, for those of you who aren't familiar, we had a great group of students from Whitman-Hanson come up for the Mass CUE Day, and I had two great, very impressive exhibits, one on the March Madness for reading, which was very cool, and then one on the 3D printing for fidget spinners. So your students were fantastic, we got to spend some time with them, Representative Sullivan as well, and we really enjoyed it, so, great. It was a good, I know money's a really important thing, but it was great.
It was awesome.
For the community to see that, and, you know, it is important to keep that in mind, so, great job.
Thank you.
And I'll leave this with you, but basically, my chief of staff, I thought I sent everybody, because I know Laura Kement, and she sent it out to some people as well, but basically, the Foundation Budget Review Commission found that the original funding formula fell drastically short on the resources necessary to close the achievement gaps for low-income students, single-syllabic learners, also healthcare costs, special ed costs have surpassed assumptions, which we all know.
Very familiar with that.
Yes.
The only problem with that is it does nothing for Whitman-Hanson.
Right.
And that's what I care about, what happens here at Whitman-Hanson. You know, it does nothing for us. I understand declining enrollment, I understand we're in the hold, almost 4.3 million, I get it.
Right.
Okay? At the same time, I get that we're just at the bottom of per pupil spending.
Right.
We squeeze a nickel as hard as you could most possibly squeeze one in this district, and we're still looking for other ways to squeeze it even tighter to turn, you know, to bring that down. People do multiple jobs here, people just pitch in, we've got fantastic teachers that go above and beyond. If you walked around this school right now, you'd probably still find a teacher, and it's June, okay, and they're still here. We've got incredible people, and we do more with such little resources, and when we did regionalize, we were promised fully funded regional transportation, that was a big thing. Okay, yes, our Chapter 70 funding did go up, and now, because it went up, we're being penalized against it. We don't see the increases, but yet our budget increases 3%, 4% a year, like just about every other school district there is. Some of our costs we can control, the contractual obligations, others we count with special education. So then, all we can do is go to our towns and ask them to give us more. Well, they can only raise and appropriate under 2.5 so many dollars. We're just, we're dead in the water.
Right.
You know, and then you get to talk about, oh, they're going to weigh off this one and that one, and you have a cop that says, well, why should I lose my job because the schools can't control their spending? And that's not the case, and I can understand their mindset, okay, and at the end of the day, all we're doing is we're failing our kids. And it's just not fair to them. You know, I had a parent write a letter, you know, the other day, you know, very concerned about class size. You know, that parent has every right to be upset, complain, I'd be in there, you know, same shoes, and I wish I could wave a magic wand. I mean, heck, I buy a Powerball ticket, and if I hit it, we wouldn't have a budget problem.
Right.
Can I get that right?
You got that in the minutes, Michelle, right?
I don't mean to take that on you, you've been, you know, gracious and fantastic as far as supporting amendments, et cetera. I disagree with what Senator Lewis is doing in his office, okay, with the Foundation Budget Review, because at the end of the day, I feel, they're going to come out and dump their chest and say, hey, quarter of a million dollars more for education. Whitman-Hanson, eh, you got about 70 grand.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that's just not enough, it's just, $25 million of our budget comes from the state, it's a big amount.
Right.
But when it doesn't increase at the same level as our budget increases, now you're putting the burdens, so much on the shoulders of the towns, and they're just, they're broke, they've broken, they can't withstand the weight of it any longer. You know, and it's not been just this year, it's been last year, the year before, the year before. Can anybody here remember a year that we didn't have a budget crisis with the school budget?
Pretty much not.
And you've been how long, Mr. Hayes?
16 years.
So, you know, that's where I'm coming from.
No, I totally agree.
And I don't mean to be...
I understand, and I've been on the School Committee back in 96 in Brockton, when Brockton was in a difficult situation, and I know I don't just represent Brockton, I represent northeast of Brockton, all the way to Hanover, down to Plimpton, and every district is looking for funding, and I try to be even to everybody, not, you know, obviously Brockton is a poor community, so they get different funding sources, and what was mentioned earlier with our friend from Susan Bump's office, the Ed Reform Act took place because there was disparity of funding back then. There was a lawsuit against the Board of Education, started with the city of Brockton from two, a school committee's daughter, and then it was McDuffie versus Board of Education, and then maybe another lawsuit coming from these cities again, because they're complaining just like the towns are, even though Brockton did get more money because of the way the funding is. But I totally agree with Whitman-Hanson and the other towns, too.
Take Brockton, for instance, okay, they get over $4,000 more per pupil in Chapter 70 funding than Whitman-Hanson.
Right.
All right? They have Route 24, they have a highway that goes right by them, they have manufacturing, they have commercial, they have a Westgate Mall, they have a much larger commercial tax base in which to work with.
Right.
Now, you say they're a poorer community, but they're a far bigger community, and I bet you that they're taxed...
I totally agree, but as you know, the shoe, not, same as Whitman had a shoe industry with Regal Shoes and all that back in the day, the shoe industry is gone, that was the base of the commercial base.
Yeah.
Now WB Mason, which, thank God, for Brockton, their home headquarters, but the medical industry is the largest employer in the private sector in this region beyond everything else. All the other industries are gone, and they've been trying to get different industries, but it's a cliche, and it costs, you know, the tax rates, as you know, is split in Brockton. Commercial rates, they're killing the businesses, and it's up to the city council due to this. The residents don't pay as high as the commercial, you get, and you got two levels of commercial, you got the high industrial, which there's not many of those left, and then you got the other thing, then there's a disparity with the hospitals. Brockton Hospital is a nonprofit hospital, so they don't pay taxes, they pay some in lieu of taxes. The old Cardinal Cushion finally went to become a private hospital, so they're one of the biggest taxpayers to the city of Brockton, which is great for Brockton, it doesn't help you guys, of course. But we're looking at other sources, the gaming revenue, that's going to be a big influx of revenue. Everett's supposed to be opening shortly, the other casino in Springfield is open, and the cliche that it was going to be crime and all these other things, this happened, the exact opposite. We visited the site up there, we had a Carmore Conversation tour, visited different communities. All the businesses around this casino in Springfield, which is the worst areas in the world, where you knew drug dealing was going on in some of the pubs there, they've cleaned it up, they've been able to hire more police, fire, and teachers, and it's helped out the city with a lot of revenue. So the same thing is proposed for Everett, and there's another third casino that they're So the same thing is proposed for Everett, and there's another third casino that they're battling, they haven't approved the one in the social, other than Plainridge, which is a slot parlor. The Airbnbs that never had any tax revenue coming, and that's coming in. I didn't agree personally, and I can't speak on my colleagues' behalf, the marijuana legislation, because we sent a group out to Colorado, even though you have to be 21 to purchase it, they're marketing to young kids indirectly, so there's more young kids getting a hold of it, and we have passed some legislation on, you know, it's tough to find somebody driving under, it's easier if they're under the influence of alcohol, but not with marijuana, so we're trying to address that, and there's some equipment to test that, but that, I didn't agree to support because of what happened in Colorado, but it is law, the voters voted for it, we have to buy, buy it, and there's some legislation that's passed, and there's money in that to help people with addiction, but we are going to get some revenue from that, you got to weigh out the cost benefits based on the negative impact it's going to have, but there is, and then, and then the fair share amendment, that there was a lot of debate today, we supported 100% reimbursement on school transportation, it didn't pass in the amendments today, because there was no roll call on that, and there was a couple others similar that we supported, but we are looking at other revenue sources constantly,